Good evening. It's past seven o'clock, so we'll start this. We would like to have everybody stand for a pledge to the flag, which will be led by Liz Ryder.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome all of you to the public hearing for local law number one of 2012 for the town of Paltone to effect a moratorium and prohibition within the town of natural gas and petroleum exploration and extraction activities, underground storage of natural gas and disposal of natural gas or petroleum extraction, exploration, and production of wastes. And Donna, could you please read our notice?
Notice of a public hearing on the adoption of a proposed local law to be known and cited as the Town of Paltone, New York Local Law Tentatively Number One for the year 2012. Legal notice is hereby given that pursuant to Section 130 of the town law and Section 20 of the municipal home rule law and further pursuant to a resolution of the Town Board of the Town of Paltone, New York passed on March 14th, the Town Board of the Town of Paltone will hold a public hearing at the Municipal Building at 9226 Cunningham Route 74, Paltone, on March 27th at 7:00 p.m. to hear all interested parties and citizens for or against the adoption of the above referred local law. The intent of this local law is imposing a moratorium on and prohibition of gas and petroleum exploration and extraction activities, underground storage of natural gas and disposal of natural gas or petroleum extraction, exploration, and production wastes.
As we proceed, if you would care to, we would like you to tell us who you are. That's definitely not a necessity, but we'd appreciate it because at our Town Board meetings we do start out by introducing ourselves when we speak. So in that vein, I would like to have the head table introduce themselves and then we will proceed after the introductions. Would you like to start, Junior?
My name is Junior Gibson. I'm on the Town Council.
My name is Liz Ryder.
I'm Donna Conway.
Jane Russell.
Jennifer Prostick, Town Attorney.
And we are being videotaped tonight because there are two of our Town Board members who had prior engagements. So we thought that the best thing to do would be to have a good video of this. It will be on YouTube for two weeks. So we will be timing, Jennifer will be timing. The comments will be limited to three minutes. We will start with Paltone residents. We're going to ask that everyone get an opportunity to speak who would like to speak and if there is enough time afterwards, if anyone would care to make a secondary comment, we will be entertaining that as well because we have not a very good crowd. So we are not going to have any discussion with the board. We will be only listening to comments. It will be helping us to evaluate what we need to do about making a decision as the board. We will be voting on this on April 11th at our Town Board meeting. There will be no discussion at that time. So this is the only time that the public will be able to make comments. So is there someone that would like to begin that would be a Paltone resident?
Is it okay to speak in opposition first or do you want your pros first?
Don't care. But would you like to tell the group who you are?
My name is William Weber. I reside at 14196 Stone Point on Cuculay, and I should like to speak in opposition to this proposed moratorium. I'd like to begin by reciting some facts. One, New York State DEC currently has a statewide moratorium on Marcella Shale slickwater hydrofracking for gas extraction, will be lifted only when the DEC has reviewed and submitted comments and documents and approves the statutory generic impact statement leading to the appropriate regulations and permitting process. Two, there are two lawsuits proceeding in process challenging Article 23 of the New York State Conservation Law, which is home rule question at the minimum. Three, there are actions in New York State Senate and Legislature to override Article 23 and provide for home rule of gas mining and its related activities. And four, the wellhead price of natural gas is at a near all-time low and has caused Chesapeake Energy, for one, to have its drilling capacity in Pennsylvania. I hope you will be able to find the above statements as findings of fact in the true legal process leading to your vote on the issue. I now ask the following questions. One, are you convinced that gas drilling and its related activities will destroy Cuculay? Two, are you convinced that gas drilling and its related activities will pollute our groundwater? Three, are you convinced that gas drilling and its related activities will ruin our roads? And four, are you convinced that gas drilling and its related activities will transform the Town of Paltone into an industrial wasteland? If you are convinced of the positive answers to the above questions, I ask you to forget about a moratorium and have the Town Attorney rework the language of the moratorium to transform it into an absolute ban on gas drilling and its related activities and draft a long-form secret to complete the process of making the draft moratorium document a local law. This will enable the Town Planning Board to concentrate on the comprehensive plan for the town in hopes it can address the following considerations. One, finding means of providing other sources of wealth for landowners who will no longer have access to the mineral rights of their land. Two, providing a means of securing the necessary infrastructure for small business and job creation. Three, promoting agriculture and encourage people with agricultural interests to move into Paltone. And four, promote more year-round residents and increasing the population of young men and women who have children to stem the loss of school-aged children in our local schools. Based on your findings of fact and the negative effects of banning gas drilling and its related activities, it might be prudent to do nothing in light of the facts and questions surrounding gas drilling in New York State and the Finger Lakes region. I see no hurry in passing any legislation that may well have no effect on gas drilling or rather put a heavy burden on the Planning Board and the community as a whole. Thank you. I have written these up and I will give them to the Town Clerk for distribution to the Town Board, Attorney, Town Clerk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there a person that would like to speak on the opposite side?
Hi, folks. My name is Bruce. I'm a Paltone resident. Just in answer to some of Bill's comments there, a number of times he asked if you, meaning us, I think, are convinced of those various issues. Are we convinced that we're going to ruin the roads? Are we convinced that we're going to contaminate the land, streams, whatever? The obvious answer is no. We're not convinced. We don't have all the facts. That's why a moratorium is appropriate, because we don't have all the facts. All a moratorium is doing is saying, no, don't allow this to happen until we have all the facts. So in answer to your question, Bill, no, they're not convinced of that. You also say this is going to put a heavy burden, if we go for a moratorium, it would put a heavy burden on the Planning Board. I'm not that familiar with the Planning Board's processes. I'm not sure what that means. If signing a piece of paper is a heavy burden, I take issue with that. Bottom line for me, it seems that this whole thing comes down to a benefit to the landowners, possible benefit to the town for some tax income. That would be landowners with gas leases that would benefit. For me, in looking at this whole area and the potential risks involved, I see that as benefiting, possibly benefiting the few at the risk of the many. And it's just not a balance there. It's not fair. In this writing here, a couple things it didn't address, and this is obviously pro fracking, pro drilling, doesn't talk about noise pollution, all the trucks, all the generators, all the diesel that are going to be running 24/7. It doesn't take into account how long any of these types of pollution, that's noise, traffic, whatever, will take to occur. One well pad, I don't know how long it takes to develop. I'm guessing maybe two months. That may be way off. Maybe six months. I don't know. So if you imagine one well pad taking six months, you start, you have all the pollution, you're done, no big deal. How many well pads are there going to be? How many years in the future do those six months keep adding on and on and on? So it's not just a simple six months and we're done thing, at least from my perspective. Bottom line is, I think there's too much at risk here because of the unknowns to allow this to go through without a moratorium first. We need time to get the questions answered. Thank you.
Is there another speaker against the moratorium? We're going to wait until all of Paltone. Is there another speaker for the moratorium?
My name is Janice Stone. I live on the lake, 14314 West Lake Road. I drink the lake water. It's unfiltered and the ducks, the geese, the fish, all the wildlife that uses the lake and the aquatic life in the lake all drink that unfiltered water. If we had the hydro fracking, the potential for the lake being contaminated is there and all those things would be affected by it. The reason you have the moratorium is not to ban the hydro fracking per se, but it's to give the town a chance to redo their comprehensive plan. We already have a comprehensive plan, but gives them a chance to get that updated and also redo their zoning laws. Again, we have pretty good zoning laws, but they need some tweaking. I don't think it should be a burden on the Planning Board. I think that with the moratorium, it gives us a year to work on those two things and then if they're not finished in a year's time, you can ask for a six-month extension. And then along with the moratorium, I would suggest that the Town Board appoint a committee made up of a Planning Board member, a zoning board member, our zoning officer, and probably a Town Board member and a committee, a person from the, that's not an A those boards, from the general population or a couple. It doesn't, there's no, you know, it could be five-member board, seven-member board, whatever. And then that committee works on redoing the comprehensive plan and the zoning laws and then that we go to the Planning Board to look over, but it takes that burden off of just the Planning Board. You have more people involved in doing this instead of putting the burden on one board. So that's my suggestion, that you pass the moratorium and give us that time to work on those things and then get those, all those things in place. And the reason for not waiting on this is we don't know when the DEC is going to make their decision. It could be anytime. Now, we, everybody thinks it's not going to be till close to the end of the year, but we don't know that. And we can't wait till after they make the decision and then hurry up and try to get something done before any permits because we don't know what their timeline is. So that's my reasons for having the moratorium and doing it now.
Is there anyone that would like to speak against the moratorium that's a Paltone resident? Is there anybody that would like to speak for the moratorium that is a Paltone resident?
Joseph Campbell. I live on, oh.
That's okay. She was pointing at both of us. Can you do it in stereo?
Sure. Joseph Campbell. I live right down on Cross Street here in the Town of Paltone. I lived here for, oh, I don't know, 25, 28 years. I remember when they were completing a vertical well, probably a half a mile from my house, we have a well. My well is between 60 and 80 feet deep. That's where we get our water for drinking, bathing, cooking, whatever. And I remember for a period of probably a month, that water got all fizzy and off-color. We had no idea what was going on at the time. That was a vertical well. It wasn't a horizontally hydrofract well. I'm very concerned with the possible contamination of my well water. It would render my home worthless, basically. I don't know what Mr. Weber was getting at and I'm kind of confused whether he was for or against. I assume he was against this moratorium. The moratorium, as Janet said, is for a purpose, to give you time. We don't have time now to put a complete ban in effect. We have time to put a moratorium in effect. A moratorium will give us time to study the issue besides whether or not this town needs a ban on this industry. I think we do. I love this fact, this little brochure. They bring it up everywhere. 99.5% of the fracking fluid is water and sand, right? Well, I did the math once. If you assume that there's 6 million gallons of water or frac fluid required to frac one well one time, .5 or half of 1% of 6 million is, what is it, 40,000 gallons or something like that? But I love to quote Chip Northrup when he says, "By the time the 475th truck goes by your house, you're not going to care much what's in that truck." And when you can't walk down your road anymore because of the traffic, when your kids can't play in the road anymore because of the traffic, I rest my case. When your roads are destroyed because of the traffic, you know, life isn't worth living here in Paltone anymore. So I say pass this moratorium now and immediately put in place a committee to study the issue and decide whether or not a total ban on fracking is appropriate for the Town of Paltone. Thank you.
Is there a Paltone resident that would like to speak against the moratorium? Is there a Paltone resident that would like to speak for the moratorium?
Anybody behind me?
No.
Thomas, I'm a resident. I don't have much to say other than I support the moratorium, which is obvious since I was fighting for it. But I really would like to stress that committee because I think that's important. It takes care of something Bill was concerned about, the Planning Board being overworked. Committee can do a lot of the work and the committee can be drawn from a lot of people, including someone who's not for the moratorium. Why not? Have everybody at the table. But I would load it towards the moratorium just so that we can get this thing passed. But that's all I wanted to do, is support the idea, get the moratorium passed and support the idea of setting up a committee made up of the kinds of people that Janet was talking about, including someone who's not for fracking for balance.
Is there a speaker against the moratorium from the Town of Paltone? Is there a speaker for the moratorium from the Town of Paltone?
Hi, I'm Jeff Entrezak, 8383 Gallagher Road. And so I'm for the moratorium and I'm also, I agree with Thomas and with Joe about that we need a committee to, that would look at this issue over and it should be balanced enough. We should have some of the people that are for fracking on that committee. But as you can see in this room, it kind of shows you maybe a little bit of a slice of what we feel in this town because right now there's been only one person that's against the moratorium that spoke out. And look how many people have said that they're for the moratorium. And my feeling is that I don't really trust Albany and I even less trust DC. I mean, when you kind of look at the history of the United States, we had to overthrow King George. He was a tyrant. And we developed the finest democracy in the whole world. And that democracy functions best when the people have the power to decide what's best for their town. And when we would hand over our power over to Albany, it really scares me because Albany is the most dysfunctional state government in the United States. There's many sources that say that. And by having it where the people in the town can decide what's best for the town, maybe I wouldn't agree with everything the town would want, but I think the town should decide. And that's where I'm for the home rule and I think that we should eventually ban it, the hydrofrack, zone it out as a heavy industrial usage. But I was looking in this literature here too that's dropped by the Steben Land Coalition and it said, "There's no documented cases of groundwater contamination from hydraulic fracking." And I just filmed in the movie down there, Dimic. That was just one area, but there was like over 30 houses on one road that had ruined water wells and property values. I recently was down, about a month ago down to PA, and there was a guy that's a real nice family and he took me out to his well casing and he said, "You see along this six-inch well casing that bored down into the ground 18 inches?" And I said, "What did that?" And he showed me his filming camera of it and the methane came up out of his well and blasted, just like a, just shot right down and bored like 18 inches around his well casing and that would go on episodes. And that's not natural occurring methane because I don't think anybody's ever seen a well casing do that. So that's a case of, one case, but when you film movies, you get to meet so many people and most people don't want to go on film because their attorneys don't want them to. But I don't think that fracking is safe and responsible and like they say it is and it's not clean and green. And I don't even think it's patriotic because they drove the price of the gas down so low that many of the companies are barely even keeping the float financially and they have a lot of foreign investors like from China coming in and giving a lot of money to these so-called American gas companies. I think the town should be able to decide whether they want fracking. I don't think it should be a big gas company that has financial stakes in Shanghai that you have some bean counters there that say, "We want Paltone gas because we have a voracious appetite for gas and American gas is so cheap and we want it on the cheap." So, thank you.
Is there a speaker from the Town of Paltone against the moratorium? Is there a speaker from the Town of Paltone for the moratorium?
Against, I was going to speak.
You're going to speak again? Okay.
Yeah. I'm Brett Steves. I live down on West Lake Road. And towards the end of something, so I'm not sure about everything I have to say, but I did hear about a burden on the Planning Board. And I don't think, I've been heavily involved with the Planning Board in Hammondsport. We have a huge project going on there that was over their heads. I don't think that that's an argument because the Planning Board has a job to do, whether it's approving a deck or sorting out this problem. So I think that should be stricken from consideration first and foremost. Secondly, I'd be hard pressed to find somebody on bed who moved here on the promise that we were going to have fracking. I think it showed up one day at our doorstep and just like a traveling salesman, you can tell them, "I didn't need it when I woke up. I'm not sure I need it now. Just because you're here doesn't mean I have to buy it." And so I think it's a promise to a few and a threat to a lot of others and I think we really need to look at it that way. If there's any chance at all, I take it. We didn't come here to take chances. We came here to live in this place. And so I think that is the best reason. There should be no chances, no risk.
Is there a Paltone resident that would like to speak against the moratorium? Is there a Paltone resident that would like to speak for the moratorium?
My name's Jody Entrezak. I live on Gallagher Road. I just want to say that I agree with everyone that has spoken on having the moratorium in place. I think they came up with some very good reasons and still the one that I'll repeat is that the moratorium, for a year-long moratorium, gives us the time to look at more details to form a committee that can look at it from different angles. And I agree with Jeff and some others that have said it. I think that we should eventually zone it out, but still right now the thing is the moratorium. So I think that we should put the moratorium in place so we can look at it in detail. Thank you.
Is there a Paltone resident that would like to speak against the moratorium? Is there a Paltone resident that would like to speak for the moratorium?
My name is Yvonne Taylor and I currently live on Cross Street. I just got off the phone with a retired nuclear physicist from Hamilton College and he's been studying the fact that in the southern tier in particular, not only is there chemicals and things that come up out of the ground during the fracking process, but there's also radium-226 and radon. And that is present not only in the gas itself, but also in the wastewater that comes out of the fracking process. And again, that's why I am in support of a moratorium in the Town of Paltone because we don't, we're learning new information about this process all the time. And until it's conclusive, I think a moratorium is the most appropriate process to start. Thank you.
Is there a Paltone resident that would like to speak against the moratorium? Is there a Paltone resident that would like to speak for the moratorium? Is there a non-Paltone resident that would like to speak against the moratorium?
Jane Russell's a resident, isn't she?
I, yes.
Oh, are you going to do this now or?
I'm going to do that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
My name is Jeff Heller. I am with the Steben County Landowners Coalition. That's our fact sheet that you're handling. We, by the way, I'm chairman of the Political Action Committee and I'm chairman of the Executive Committee. In that sense, I would speak to some degree for some of your landowners. We have about 800 acres in the coalition from Paltone now. I talked to a gentleman tonight that would put that over 1,000 acres. I want to just present the coalition's point of view on the moratorium. I don't have time to wind up the science, which I would love to do, but I can't. The only positive that we can see is that you The only positive that we can see is that you would be making a political statement by passing the moratorium. You would be saying, the town of Poltoni does not want the gas industry. If that's a majority of residents, that's a legitimate statement. On the other hand, there are several major negative points or effects that I would like to run over, particularly with the board members. And I was hoping that you would have had and read the note, the two-page, one and a half-page note that you got from the coalition. That discussed the possibility of suits as a result of moratoriums. If you haven't read that, I'm going to refer to that as briefly as I can and still try to stay under three minutes. The first point, the first negative point is, in all probability, the moratoriums are going to be ruled illegal. Now, that's so far through the local courts, that has been appealed, in Middlefield and Dryston. But as soon as it goes to the appellate level, we're relatively confident that those will be overturned, as they have been overturned in every other state that has passed that type of thing. They just don't stand. There's a long, an hour discussion on why that's true. If your concern is safety, and it's obvious that that's really what the main concern is here, is safety. And then that gets into our fact sheet, which we're already hearing arguments against. But let me tell you folks, there has never been a case verified of hydraulic fracturing, polluting in any way, any aquifer, any well, any water source. Never. Now, if you want to talk about surface issues, that's different. Well casing malfunctions or that sort of thing, surface accidents, that's all industrial, that's normal. But we really should stop talking about hydrofracking as a source of pollution. It just doesn't happen, or it hasn't. Anything is possible. We could be hit by a Pacific tsunami. That's almost as likely as hydraulic fracturing. If you don't have any confidence in a DEC, then, then their regulations don't make any difference to you. But for most of us, the DEC regulations are going to be the stiffest in the world. They were before sieges. Basically, the DEC has every concern covered. If you're willing to pass on the economic and tax revenue advantages of gas drilling, then we have to assume that you not only are happy with the current tax burden, but that you must look forward to passing on the inevitable tax increases to your residents. And in that-
Time's up.
Three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a Poltoni resident that has not spoken that would like to speak?
Can we re-speak?
To, wait. In favor of the moratorium. Is there a Poltoni resident, is there a non-Poltoni resident that would like to speak in favor of the moratorium?
Hi, my name is Mark Schlechter. I'm an attorney from Bath. I have property in Wayne, and so I, I share a lot of the residents here in Poltoni that you're concerned about the Kukalake. I worked very, very hard and very long on the moratorium that was passed in Wayne. Contrary to the comments from Mr. Heller, is it? Okay. I don't consider what the board is doing in considering the moratorium to be a political statement at all. I consider it to be a statement from a town of concerned people that, in order to adequately protect the residents, you can't rely on the federal government. There's lots of loopholes that the federal government has for hydrofracking. You can't rely on the state because we really don't know what the DEC is doing. We, we hear different opinions all the time. I think it's incumbent upon boards like you to adequately protect the community yourselves. I have to make one, one response to the, the threat of the lawsuit. There has been no lawsuit in New York State from any, against any town or village for passing a moratorium. This is not a ban. It's a moratorium. As, as has been very capably said by a lot of these residents, this is a, a, a chance for the town to stop and wait and see, to look into the issue. I've been involved with this issue for a number of years. The more I learn, the more questions I have about the environmental impact, about the public health impact, about frankly, the economic impact. That the amount of jobs is overblown, the amount of gas under us is vastly overestimated. I, I don't share his legal opinion as far as what the appellate courts are going to do. Two very, very conservative justices of the Supreme Courts in New York State have both ruled very strongly that moratorium, that, that bans are perfectly within the jurisdiction of towns and villages to pass. They are not regulating the industry, you are regulating zoning. So I, I don't share the, the confident opinion of the Landowners Coalition that somehow an appellate court is going to rule any differently. Right now, the law in New York State is that bans are perfectly legal and can be done. And I think that the moratorium especially is, is extremely important to pass. And I think it's important to pass soon. The DEC has indicated that they are finishing up their regulations, and permits can be issued as soon as, the day that the regulations are done. And I think it's incumbent upon boards to pass this moratorium now. Because if you wait too long, it will be too late, and you will not be able to do so. So again, I, I urge you, whether you're for or against fracking, I, I don't think there's any question that it's going to radically transform our communities. And that's a question that the boards all over New York State, especially in this area, and especially those near Kukalake, have to strongly consider. So I, I strongly urge you to, to follow the sentiments of many of your town members and pass this moratorium as soon as possible.
We have two letters from residents that the board has received. Everyone has had copies of this. We will definitely take them under consideration when we're doing our final deliberating. One is from a resident, and one is from a landowner that is a non-resident. Both are against the moratorium. Is there any other person here that would like to make any other comment? Are you-
Go ahead. I was just going to say, Jane, are you going to read these? I think we should read them. Because they can't be here tonight. So I was contacted by one of them.
Okay. Would you like to read, would you like to read them?
Yeah, I'm going to read them.
Because my voice is-
Okay.
Great.
Um, dear town board, we are sending this letter to, actually, I should read the first one because it refers to the first one. This one is from Scott Klein. My name is Scott Klein, I am a summer Kukalake cottage resident of the town of Poltoni and a landowner to a nearby Ontario county. I do not support a drilling moratorium. I urge the town of Poltoni to reject any such notion and recommend instead working in cooperation with the oil and gas companies and the Staben County Natural Gas Task Force as necessary and prudent. I worked in the oil and gas industry for almost thirty years and was involved in the early implementation of horizontal drilling in many parts of the country. I have never worked in an area where any town ever felt the need to propose a moratorium. Without exception, towns across the country simply relied on the state and federal regulations to develop guidance and then worked in cooperation with the oil and gas companies and other stakeholders to ease traffic and infrastructure strains. Companies are more than willing to cooperate to be, they, be sure that they are temporarily, any temporarily inconveniences to the town result in proper planning and cooperation. These can be mitigated while simultaneously reaping enormous economic benefits to land owners through taxes. Very few accidents occur in the shale gas development. And New York proposed regulations, including the setbacks from public sources of drinking water that is currently two thousand feet proposed, and their tributaries five hundred feet. Well construction, well construction rules and well pad construction under stormwater permits mitigate the rare incidents. These setbacks and rules have been developed and based on scientific studies. Unfounded shale fears obscure facts and continue to be perpetuated by those who have no experience in the process or an anti-fossil fuel agenda in, agenda in general. I hope only to point the recent full-page ad in the January fifteenth, two thousand twelve Chronicle Advisor by the Friends of Barrington dot com. Pictures were shown of a drill site that are not accurately labeled, and in fact, New York does not even allow any open pits during drilling or completion, instead requiring closed systems with drilling and completion fluids directly to only closed tanks. Claims in the ad of allowing farm and lake property to diminish and sacrificing of farmers, including Mennonites, are ridiculous. My farming neighbors in Ontario County, include Mennonites, would love to have the chance to have responsible development of their land. I am neither concerned in the least about any decrease in my Kukalake property nor any contamination risk as a result of drilling. I am however concerned by the steady decline in economic condition of the southern tier and anti-bias sediment and attempts to block landowners and towns from reaping the benefits of natural gas development. I could go on about the misfortune in the advertisement, the innumerable letters to the editors of local papers, and the perpetuated misinfiction of anti-drilling meetings by attorneys that I don't want to mention at this time. And many others who have no expertise in the shale gas development technology. The other one is from Jonathan and Juanita Barter, who live on Ford Road. We are sending this letter to express our solidarity with the sentiments expressed in Dr. Scott Klein's letter to you in regard to gas drilling in our township and indeed in the state of New York. It is assumed that you are all well acquainted with the municipality of issues that have divided our region and created hostility among neighbors. The emotional component has surely tainted an objective perspective. We are urging you to stand back and maintain an objectivity as you make decisions. We obviously support gas drilling in New York State and in our area. We own land, so we would be immediately labeled as prejudiced. However, please permit us to briefly offer our perspective. We moved here from southeast Pennsylvania. This is a beautiful region, but our taxes are outrageously high, and unlike where we came from, we see almost nothing for the taxes we pay. What we do see is rural environment that is largely underdeveloped and an infrastructure that looks as if it has been in a state of decline for decades. There appears to be a lack of will within the community to change and evolve. The status quo is the order of the day. Whereas one resident could be an investment for the future, it seems to be a static or moderately deteriorating commodity. I could go on, but what's the point? Is this all we want? It is still a huge disconnect in my mind that we drive our powers all over the place with expensive gas and heat our homes and switch on our electricity, using energy that largely comes from a long way away, and yet we endorse the notion of bullying locally to support our community. Yet we'd rather turn a blind eye to the energy markets and their accompanying issues, environmental companies, and flagellant exploitation, while enjoying the end product. As long as it's not in our backyard, I don't really care. We are supportive of the industry that while being largely motivated by profit, may provide a mutual benefit and boost to our region. We hope that one day there will be a tax base that is large enough to see a decline in taxes. We hope that people will have a reason to come here and stay. There are opportunities that are knocking on our doors, and yet the prevailing sediment seems to be leave us alone. Go somewhere else, but we'll still use your local oil and gas. There is enormous precedent for mutually benefiting from an entity that we'd rather not have anything to do with. Before we start applauding ourselves for restricting the temptation or succumbing to forces larger than most of us, and wallow in the superficial virtues of environmental protectionism and noble conservationism, please consider carefully what you may be willing to turn your backs on. Thank you for your consideration.
At this point, is there any other person that would like to speak at all?
Just a, just a real brief comment. We've all heard both sides of this argument here tonight from a number of different, different people. Some are professing facts, we just don't know. Are they rumors, are they facts? Some dispute what others are saying. We don't know. And right there is the reason we need a moratorium, because we don't know. That's all I got to say.
I'd like to just support what Bruce said, just in reference to those, to those two letters. Which are, as far as I can hear, anti-fracking, anti-non-fracking, against people who are against fracking. But I don't think that they have any bearing on the moratorium. Because the moratorium is not banning fracking, again. I wish people could get that through their heads. The moratorium is to study the issue for the reasons that Bruce just said. It's very simple. I don't know why it's so difficult for people to understand that, unless they don't want to.
Okay. At this point, is there a pro, and, excuse me, is there anyone against the moratorium that would like to speak?
Just to finish my thoughts on, on what I didn't have time for, I hope that you're all aware of Title V of the New York State Tax Code and the benefits for the town under that. Hope you are. That would be discussed in that letter. And I hope you all read that letter. This gentleman is right, there have been no suits so far. That doesn't mean there won't be any. The Middlefield and the Dryston decisions are only about a month old. So the time to, for the suits hasn't even happened yet. But those will be very costly for the towns if they can establish that the moratoriums have deprived the landowners of their mineral rights. Which, which it will. Because if we would get a lease in Staben County during your moratorium period, then your landowners will be out of the lease. And in that sense, they would be deprived of their mineral rights. So, I, I don't think you can totally rule it out. He's correct that it hasn't happened yet, that's true. But it's so, such a young issue that it's far from determined yet.
Okay, we're going to take five more minutes of comments, and I think that we will have completed the discussion on this issue. First, Mark, and then Jeff.
And this, this will, just real quick, in, in response, I think, I think what the gentleman is talking about is, is what's called a takings claim, that, that by passing a moratorium, you are depriving people of the value of their land. That was never even an argument raised by anybody in either of the two court cases. They, the, the court cases were simply an interpretation of the environmental conservation law and whether or not we were, the, the moratorium, the bans, we're talking about drilling the industry versus regul- regulating the industry versus regulating zoning. They, they had the opportunity, they had lots of money and lots of attorneys at their disposal. They never made the argument that, that this was going to deprive landowners of their, of their rights. And they had the opportunity to do so. So, the threats about a lawsuit are just simply that. Their threats and their scare tactics to try to get town boards not to do what they think is, is important for their community.
Jeff?
Yep. And in response to Mr. Heller, he was saying that we don't, making it sound like, that we don't encourage, like we don't want the gas industry. And I don't personally have any problem with the old Granddaddy's vertical wells that they used to do. So, to say that we're against gas extraction, I'm not against gas extraction if it's done safely and responsibly. And doing the old Granddaddy's well was, had some issues, but still, it was a way to get the gas out. So, and Mr. Heller made it sound like the moratoriums are going to be, that they would be, the Court of Appeals was going to overturn everything. But the, the largest upstate law firm in the whole upstate region, which is, I can't think of the name, but it's very conservative, almost always siding with business over environmentalist. And they felt that the towns will have the right to have been sent the home rule and be able to zone out hydrofrack out of their town. And that, that's like the most conservative, large upstate law firm in the whole state. And they feel that the appellate court will hold it. So I think it is scare tactics, part of the land coalition trying to get everybody to kind of be like a rabbit in front of headlights and do, and do nothing. And the fact, he's saying the DEC is the stiffest in the world. Well, even if you, as Dr. Graffy is one of the developer of hydrofrack, if you have five metal casings, it's that outer casing where it meets the rocks around it. You only have like three-quarter of an inch of concrete around there, and it has to go miles down. Under that high pressures, up to almost twenty thousand PSI, it doesn't take much to crack that concrete. Any crack with, or the aquifer is in the area, you're going to ruin a bunch of water wells. And we've seen case after case of it. And I strongly go against that. There's never been a case. It's alleged on TV, I saw Mark Ruffalo say that there's five thousand gag orders, non-exposure agreements that the gas industry has used to silence anybody that they've ruined their water wells and property values. And just because a gas industry has more money than, than God and can buy people silence, doesn't mean things aren't happening. We've seen so much stuff happen down there in PA. So we think that, I strongly feel there should be a moratorium. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to point out that Dr. Scott Klein is a paid spokesperson for the oil and gas industry. And I would urge this board to not allow the Staben County Landowners Coalition or anyone else using intimidating tactics to stop you from passing this moratorium by using threats of lawsuits, et cetera. Do what's right for the community. Do what's right. Protect the, the health, safety, and welfare of your constituents, please. Protect the health, safety, and welfare of your constituents, please.
Jane, we have about thirty seconds.
Mine is about the oops factor. Sometimes, some people have surgery, and they're awake. One thing they never want to hear from their doctor is, oops. I've heard it this evening that there's no cases of contamination of the aquifer or lakes or any other water supply. And I've also, we've also been asked, are we certain that it could happen? And no, we're not certain. Maybe they could hydrofrack and it wouldn't happen? But then there's a oops factor. Do we want to take the chance that it does happen? Because if it does happen, we don't know if we could correct it. And it's, there's too many people drinking, depending on this fresh water for their drinking water, and we don't want to have to import our drinking water from some foreign country because we've ruined it for ourselves.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. I really appreciate everybody's time and attention. I hope everybody feels that they were able to communicate with us. If, because two of our board members are not here, because we are going to be voting on this, if you have any written comment that you would like to make within the next week, so that it would give the town board members time to process it, we will be accepting that. So thank you all for coming, and we really appreciate your attendance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not going to strike me.
It's good to be back, my friend.
Thank you.
Thank you.